Recording in progress.
All right, all this meeting order, Buckfield Select Board for February fourth, twenty twenty five at six thirty two P M. We do have a quorum. Old business, there's none. New business, the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the, approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second your one. Thank you, discussion? Go through your reports. So we go. So we go, okay. You're talking to me, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so the town's auditing firm, Mary J. Smith, was on site this week. Uh, they were wrapping up the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four audit requirements. I anticipate all the past due audits will be wrapped up and the town of Buckfield will be back on schedule very soon. Um, I'd like to officially welcome, I'm just gonna say Rebecca, because I haven't asked her how to properly pronounce her last name yet, but um, uh, who started on last Tuesday as the new, uh, deputy clerk. She's completed her required BLS training and has been working with Alyssa on counter training. So BMV Moses Day Vital Statistics and all other necessary responsibilities. And I've also, um, scheduled her for state training for BMV and Moses. Uh, the town was able to take advantage of efficiency main rebate programs to finalize swapping over the fire and rescue station, public works complex and transfer station to energy efficiency LED lighting. Uh, without the rebates, the project would have cost the taxpayers thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, we were able to complete the three projects with an out-of-pocket cost of just four thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars. So that means all the buildings in town have now all been converted to LEDs. Uh, that work was wrapped up on the thirty-first. I'm currently working on finalizing the twenty-five, twenty-six budget and participating delivery into the select board at the next meeting on the eighteenth. Um, we don't currently have a budget committee, so I definitely encourage residents to participate in the next several meetings to participate in the process. Now, for rescue, we had a total of forty-four calls for service during the month of January of those forty, she wrote of those forty-five calls. Twenty-nine were answered between the hours of six A and six P, and sixteen of them were between the hours of six P and six A. Um, most of the call volumes in Buckfield, seven calls in Hartford, eight in Sumner, one in Hebron, one in Turner. Thirty-three of them were BLS, ten ALS and two fires standby. Uh, mutually requested pace five, Turner one, and then mutually provided to another agency. We, we assisted pace twice in terms of. Uh, the new year started off busy for both departments. Rescue's currently seven calls ahead of where we were last year at this time. All surrounding agencies have already seen an increasing call volume so far this year with so many illnesses affecting folks this winter. It's predicted that calls for service will continue. Stacy would like to welcome two new members to the Buckfield Fire Rescue Department, Jonathan Donahue and Jacob Cateley. They both come to the department with experience in the fire and EMS service. No upcoming events to report at this time. Uh, library had three hundred eighty-nine visitors this month with twelve programs during the week. They added a daytime book club, which will meet monthly on the second Wednesday of each month. Five new patrons were enrolled and fifty-nine people came to all the programs. Kathy met with Mia Purcell of Community Constance Finance Court on SaaS. To see what programs they could have for patrons, they'll be starting a tech help session on one twenty-four. In which Jim Whitman will come for two hours to assist patrons with any technical needs they may have. If there is sufficient interest, we may make this a monthly or even weekly program. It's free to us into the patrons. Uh, several programs are planned for February. Their calendar is on our, is on their website, which you can just link to from the town's website and available at the library desk. Um, we did receive an estimate for a new front storm door that's been talked about for years on that building. And, uh, some damage was done to the floor tiles in the hall. By, in addition, by water as we're having some septic pipe issues right now. Um, I talked to a plumber and the plumber's like, yep, find us the cover to the septic tank and we can jet it. Kind of a crappy time to find it, but we'll figure it out. Once they are. All right. Thank you. All right, so we had motion seconded. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor? Bob, aye?
Sally, aye.
Heather, aye.
Peter, aye?
Sandra, aye.
And the total on the accounts payable was two hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-three cents. Approval of the minutes from January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five select board meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of the January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five select board meeting.
Second motion. Thank you. Any discussion? Here, none? All in favor? Bob, aye?
Pleasantly.
Heather, aye.
Peter, aye?
Sandra, aye.
Thank you. Memorandum of understanding between the town of Buckfield and the Mary Meeting Bay Chapter of Trout Unlimited. This is in reference to the, uh, we have put the dam down here in town. Um.
Can I read it for the record?
Sure.
All right. All right, so we've received a draft memorandum of understanding between the town of Buckfield and the Mary Meeting Bay Chapter of Trout Unlimited regarding the proposed removal of the Sea Withington Dam and Sun Dam on the west branch of the Nazinsket River in Oxford County, Maine. Uh, the contents of the memorandum are as follows. Whereas the Sea Withington Dam and Sun Dam, hereafter Dam, is ten-foot-high, ninety-foot-long and over two-hundred-year-old small run-of-the-river dis- disused stone mill dam located on the west branch of the Nazinsket River close to routes one forty and one seventeen in Buckfield, built within the river channel at the outlet of a forty-nine-square-mile catchment area. Whereas the dam was inspected in October of two thousand and three by a Maine State Dam Inspector, Tony Fletcher, due to concerns that endangered the downstream SAD thirty-nine bus garage and an adjacent building. In the report, Mr. Fletcher commented, the Nazinsket River has a fairly steep bed slope of one to thirty-five and all but minor flows in these reaches of the river. Both upstream and downstream of the dam will be fast, turbulent and supercritical. Field observations have determined that the one-hundred-year flood will overtop both the non-overflow abutments, and it is likely that the adjacent apartments built, apartments built around the left abutment will also be flooded. The possible maximum flood at the dam is estimated to be three to four times in a one-hundred-year overflow, uh, in a one-hundred-year flow. The water level at the dam could exceed ten feet in depth, which will flood several apartments at the left of the abatement. A dam breach of the left abutment under these conditions would be catastrophic. If the dam breached at the left abutment, it is anticipated that serious damage would be caused to the apartment with high risk of loss of life. I recommend that this dam be classified as a high-hazard dam. Whereas the select board of the town of Buckfield recognizes, in addition to the above, that the dam presents a flood danger to the property upstream of the dam as witnessed after two severe winter storms in twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four flooded Fonce Road, stranding residents and requiring the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to render aid and evacuation to the roads' residents. And whereas Mr. George Doty, who according to tax records owns the dam, its water rights and the water wheel, has verbally stated he wishes to have the dam removed, so it is no longer a liability. And whereas Mr. Edward Hammond, Buckfield resident and owner of nineteen Moral Street, the aforementioned apartment building, which is to have the dam removed to protect his property. And whereas Mr. Peacock, landowner on the River Wright Bank at the dam, has no objection to the dam's removal and will agree to the access and use of his land for required equipment and personnel. And whereas the Maine Departments of Inland Fish and Wildlife is designating native brook trout as a species of greatest conservation need in their upcoming twenty-twenty-five wildlife action plan, and has identified the Nazinsket River as a native brook trout's stream. And whereas the Mary Meeting Bay Chapter of Trout Unlimited, hereafter MMBTU, being a member in good standing of a five-oh-one-C-three organization, represents a community of conservation-minded anglers committed to clean waters that support healthy ecosystems for trout, salmon and other species, wishes to raise funds to contract with professional engineers to seek all required permits for the dam's removal, oversee its removal and monitor for five years any bank erosion and tree and shrub planting requirements to ensure a healthy stream. And whereas MMBTU collaborating with the Board of Directors of the Buckfield Historical Society will make a commemorative kiosk and/or interpretive signage near the site of the dam, explaining the importance of the dams and mills to the town's industrial history. Now, therefore, the select board of the town of Buckfield and MMBTU agree to jointly support all efforts to remove the dam and restore its reach of the Nazinsket River to its former fleeflowing, free-flowing natural course. These efforts may include, but not be limited to, working collaboratively with MMBTU, securing funds, hosting town meetings, promoting the general public and the use of the river for trout fishing.
Yes, Heather.
Um, I would like to move that we accept this memorandum of understanding with um, some more. Changes. Some changes.
Oh, second. Oh, second.
Any further discussion?
Um, yes, so a couple of things in here.
Thank you, sorry.
So I question, um, the first line of this memorandum where it says Sea Worthing, Sea Withington Dam and Sun Dam, that perhaps that's a typo.
It does say it in the title as well, though.
It may be correct, but it check.
Right, yeah.
Um, and we didn't write this, somebody else did.
Yeah, of course.
Um, in the first, now, so on page two, um, the paragraph, when it's talking to the flood danger of the property upstream, um, Federal Emergency Management Agency. But they, there was no aid or evacuation that was rendered. Um, we have
Financial.
Put in for financial assistance.
Yes.
So perhaps write the word to render financial aid and have it end there. So I struck the and evacuation of the roads' residents because that didn't happen.
Thank you.
And then, um, in the final, in the conclusion, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the line that says that the town of Buckfield, um, agrees to jointly support all efforts to remove the dam. I'm not sure that it's our place to voice support or not at this time. Um, what I would suggest for language is to say, now, therefore, the select board of the town of Buckfield supports all efforts of the MMBTU to research the impact of the removal of the dam, share information with community members and assist with any future necessary permitting, period. And then these efforts may include, but not be limited to, so keep the rest of the paragraph, so we would strike and MMBTU agree to jointly support all efforts to remove the dam and restore this reach of the Nazinsket River to its former free-flowing natural course. Um, because I don't believe that we're actually part of the decision-making process. As it is privately owned.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Oh, I think
Yeah.
we should support the process and support in any way we can getting information out to people, but
Yeah.
Yes, those are my thoughts.
Makes sense to me.
Mm-hmm. And Cameron and I wrote all this down to get to if some people were to agree with it.
Yeah.
So so should we go back to them for edits before we go, yes, on anything?
I, I think we should agree to what we would want to see
Yeah.
before we sign anything.
Yeah.
Right, and so they, they could edit it and reset it to us for signatures.
But the motion would just be if they accept it with our changes and make no further changes themselves, then we would accept the memorandum.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
Yes, Martha?
Um, my question says these efforts may include, but not limited to, working collaboratively with MMBTU, securing funds. MMBTU securing the funds or we? MMB participating in securing funds.
Yes, not us.
Not us, and if we could have clarifying language for that, add into that.
We would certainly support them.
Mm-hmm. Or we could strike those, but if, if that's not our responsibility
Yes.
um, to just strike the word securing funds, but not be limited to working collaboratively, hosting town meetings, promoting to the general public.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yes, Cam.
I think if I remember correctly from the meeting where they all were here presenting, one of the, in order for them to secure funds, they, they needed this memorandum of understanding showing that the towns, the, the board supports them seeking those funds.
Yeah.
So if the town doesn't support them seeking those funds in writing, then that may, I, I, I'm just putting that out there because I know that came out during the meeting was that they needed to know that the board supported that.
Mm-hmm. Or maybe it's important we keep the securing funds language, but just phrase it in a way where it's clear that the town is not securing those funds. It is up to MMBTU and as well support in whichever way we can.
Supporting, so MMBTU comma, supporting
The securing of funds.
The securing of funds by MMBTU.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Yes, Judy?
Uh, I just wanted to say, I hope that they are going to do some really good historic research, because if you read the town history, you will find that that whole, that the whole downtown was a swamp. It wasn't buildable, and what they actually did was they collected the water from different sources to create the river. So I, I hope that we do a really good, um, historical survey as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Yes.
Coming off of what Judy just said, it dawns on me and I have no idea about dam removal and river. But who is responsible if removing that dam results in consequences that MMBTU does not anticipate?
Well, like you mentioned, the town doesn't own the dam, so at the very least, the answer I would assume is not the town and likely the owner of the dam. But I, I was under the impression when they were here chatting with us that they were confident that it wouldn't have negative impacts downstream, and they haven't seen that in their other projects that they still evaluate. But if I'm being mistaken.
Yeah, they noted a lot of positives, actually, the free flow of the
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but they're gonna do a complete engineering survey and it was detailed.
Yes.
So
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not gonna touch anything till we have complete report so that we have some idea
Mm-hmm.
what may happen.
And again, they were eager to, once they figure out all of this with the memorandum and the DEP and getting the necessary approval, they were eager to host town meetings and workshops to discuss this issue with the town people and explain themselves further, so.
Yep. So what was our additional motion? We were going to
Prove it with changes.
Yeah. Yep.
There are any other changes that the board feels we should make?
No, I was just gonna mention the clarifying language in that last paragraph, so. And then, yeah, I wasn't sure about the extent of what FEMA did, so thank you for elaborating on that. Nothing for me.
Yes.
Yes, Cam.
How about adding five lines on the signatory?
Oh, yeah.
That would be good, too.
Yeah. So the motions to approve with the changes. All those in favor? Bob, aye?
Sally, aye.
Heather, aye.
Peter, aye?
Sandra, aye.
Great, thank you. Uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget process discussion. Ken Berry said he's gonna have it ready for the next meeting. Fantastic. You're going to plan a series of public hearings that will be great?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So I'm thinking, and I'm not sure quite what the format of the public. In the past, we've had public hearings.
Mm-hmm.
But we will not have the budget committee meetings. So the difference between a public hearing and a workshop
Yep.
setting, that perhaps setting them up more as workshops, so it could be more of a roundtable discussion of community members, um, attending, and I was thinking, um, it sounds like a lot, but maybe look at four different times. One of those times perhaps could be a select board meeting time, but to have one during a weekday time, um, two different weeknights and one weekend time. And if it's, because it, they would not all be select board meetings, we wouldn't need to have a quorum.
Mm-hmm.
We would just want to make sure representation is there to hear and, and discuss.
Yep.
Uh, but, but that way we would be offering
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, getting input and tracking the input.
Of course.
So that at the end we have a list and say
Right, because we would absolutely want anybody and everybody who has thoughts and concerns
Yeah.
um, to have the opportunity to discuss.
Yeah.
So those, those are my thoughts on that.
Yeah, I agree with that sentiment. I think it's important that we offer these meetings or workshops, whatever we want them to be, at times that are accessible to anyone who wants to show up. Everyone's got a different schedule they're working on, so we can try to adapt to that.
Yes, clarify the difference of format public hearing and workshop.
So I think you have that switch. A public hearing is for the public or workshops for you to work?
Right, workshop is we talk.
Okay.
Discussion is from the audience is option.
Mm-hmm.
Now, years prior, you guys have had two public hearings, obviously with the referendum vote. Uh, you've usually, in addition to this, uh, you have to have at least one, at least ten days prior to, so obviously if you have it early on, that is the requirement, but, uh, one, my recommendation would be that you hold one of those public hearings prior to you finalizing that warrant, which we need to be done by April eleventh. I've included the list of dates. Uh, and then just so scratching people's mind, if you want, have that second one closer to the election, because I mean, April eleventh is a long way to go from June tenth.
Yeah.
I just wanted to think of that while you're talking about this.
No, good point. And I almost feel a responsibility to keep the integrity of that budget committee process, hoping that people will participate in it.
Yeah.
That there's a difference between having the public hearing where it's presented, this is what we've got
Mm-hmm.
versus the meetings, what do we think we should put together? Um, so that before the select board
Mm-hmm.
decides on the budget to present to have the input of the community.
Yeah.
Right, and we'll want some time to work on it ahead of time as well. Right, so
But in, in the past, it's gone to the budget committee.
Right.
And then it comes to us.
Right.
And then we work on it.
Mm-hmm.
And that time during the budget committee is a time where community members can have the input before it comes to the select board.
Right.
So if we could afford the community members a time for their input before the select board.
Yep. Oh, I see.
Creates it.
At a time, okay.
Good day.
I got you. So we'll receive the budget February eighteen? And it's, I
So how many, do, do we need to have a quorum to have public?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
What, what can we have that doesn't require a quorum? Workshops.
All you do is work and you can't make a decision in a workshop, so.
Um.
So if, if we had some workshops, we don't need a quorum at a workshop. So I'm thinking just in a period of two weeks, have four workshops with
Mm-hmm.
some of us, at least two
Yes.
people at each workshop to just collect
Yep.
public input.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we'd be looking at March for those, I think.
So maybe like the first ten days of March and
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So our meeting that in March would be the fourth, which part of a couple of stuff to
Yeah.
March, be able to attend the March fourth meeting.
Okay.
So that would be a separate thing, I was asking to
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I'm sure on the fourth. My thing is just
Of course.
When does it have to be sent out for publishing?
We go
And you should be working back from that date. That's really your best, because what happens is if you set up all these things and then it starts to crunch, crunch and crunch, and then ballots are printed and we have public hearings after ballots are, no, we already know nobody's gonna change anything after it's printed.
Right.
So I would go with what, when the ballots have to be printed, when the, if we're, if we're sending out a booklet to the people, when that has to be printed and then try to get them in there. Because you want all those decisions made, so when you send it, that's really what the people are focused on and thought for about.
Was that the April eleventh date?
Yeah.
April eleventh, we need to sign it, and then the town clerk needs to crunch to get it so entered in, into the, their software so that we can verify that it's correct, and then um, I have everything finalized by April sixteenth, which as you can see is, gives us less than thirty days for them to have the absentee ballots to us. Uh, which is doable, I found over the last couple of years, because they only send a small, you know, I just order absentee ballots upfront and then they finish the rest of the printing, so really you're working backwards from April sixteenth. You want to have it approved by April eleventh, which is tough Friday.
Um.
Exactly, as I'm saying, your final decision to the, to the betterment of yourselves and stress level, you want to work back from that date. Whatever date that he has to have, because somebody's gotta crunch it and get it to publish.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, and if we, I mean, if we do the, is it just the fourth that doesn't work for you in the first week? If we try and do like the first and second weeks or the second and third weeks in March, that'll give us a couple of weeks to digest the information we receive before we need it finalized.
Right, I was thinking Cameron's goal is to have it ready by the eighteenth, but to have a buffer in case things happen, um. So give him that extra week to the twenty-fifth, and so between March first and, yeah, and that first week and a half to plan those four meetings.
Sure.
Yeah. All. And then and what if we looked at having select board meetings instead of the fourth and the eighteenth, do them the eleventh and the twenty-fifth?
I can't do the twentieth.
Okay. Or the eleventh and eighteenth.
I can do the eleventh and eighteenth, yeah.
So that way we, and then by the eighteenth, we would have a product that we are going to then present at public hearing.
Oh, gotcha, and then, yeah.
So So
Sorry, regularly.
Then we would need to have how many, two public hearings, right?
You only have to have one, I'm just saying, we've traditionally had two, and like I said, I I think if your intent is to have a public hearing prior to the warrant being approved, then having two makes sense, because you're gonna go essentially two months, you know, everything's old news to everybody, at least it's fresh if they want.
And the date in April that you want it ready to go and sent out?
No, I I I want it um ready to submit to the B S S by the sixteenth of April. Because that only gives me, that gives me less than a month for them to send us our absentee ballots.
So then we have a public hearing the first week in April. And that would give two weeks to make any changes that need to be made.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully there won't be any.
I thought you said you wanted to sign on the eleventh. Yeah, so so essentially, if you have a public hearing that that first week, either prior to the meeting, which that would be a really long night, but it's doable um. You could essentially, if everything's hashed out, we can work on it at that meeting and finish it. If not, depending on where it is, you'll want to schedule another select board meeting to follow that public hearing so that you guys can vote to approve it.
So I was thinking public hearing somewhere between the first and the fourth, sorry.
No.
But we could do it before the meeting, but you're right, that could if changes need to be made, that could lead to a really long night.
I think that's what you did last year, and it was a long night.
So if we have that public meeting that first week in April. And then well, Tuesday, Tuesday, the first.
I mean, select board here.
Yeah.
What if we, what if we get the public meeting on the first, and then we move our first select board meeting to the eighth?
I recommend moving the twenty-second meeting third, your fifteenth meeting to the twenty-second too, because there's a three-week gap there, and there's a lot of.
Three weeks committee meeting in summer, five-thirty to six-thirty.
On the fifteen.
On the twenty-second.
Disregard.
We could start here at seven, seven, six-thirty.
I'm just thinking bills and A B's and signing off on them.
Yeah, yeah.
So probably the place to start would be, I'd like to make a motion that we move the February fourth select board, I'm sorry, not February, the March fourth select board meeting to March eleventh. I'll second.
Any suggestions? Call us in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I, whether I.
Your eye.
Sandra, I. And then
I mean, would we not be able to do kind of like a workshop blitz between like in the two final weeks of March, and then be able to come to that April first meeting? Confirm everything, sign off on everything, hand it over. For the ballot printing.
Wait, say that again, just say.
So instead of, you know, moving April first to April eighth and all that stuff, just have kind of our workshop blitz anytime between the eleventh and the first, and then be able to come in first. Have that be our finalize meeting.
My concern with that is that the select board will want time to and work with the budget and I'm I'm feeling, and we certainly don't have to do that. That we should afford the community time for just discussion before the budget comes to the select board.
Sure, yeah.
So somehow to create that time of discussion as if it were the the budget committee.
Yeah.
So to have budget discussions where it's not the community reviewing what we suggest, but for the community to we've got that look, what do you think?
Just, I'm just thinking of the process, and so the last, the last budget committee meeting with the last budget committee that was here. One of the things that was stated by Peter at the time um, was that we were duplicating a lot of efforts as far as like, I don't know, we've done the the budget committee select board at the same time, and it got a little chaotic or whatever, but it's what are we doing the workshop on, the proposed budget before you guys have even reviewed it and discussed it? So we're gonna be duplicating efforts again.
I I'm thinking it would look like, there's a meeting, who wants to come in, this is the piece of paper, what do you think?
Yeah.
And take notes. And if nobody shows up, there's no meeting, if one person shows up, they can go right through it and tell us what they think, and we just take notes, it's not a it's, what's your input, what do you know, what knowledge do you have that we don't have?
Yeah.
So because you will all be involved, I will have to present this twice.
No.
I'll be presenting it throughout this process, and then you guys will be participating, so I won't have to go into a meeting and go through the entire budget again.
Okay.
Okay, that's the one thing I'm trying to do, because, yeah.
You could do it six times this year.
It's kind of what I was hearing at first, and I was like.
Yeah, so you could update it. Right, that's so long, yeah, yeah.
Or we're just, we're just collecting, you know.
Yeah.
So during those workshops, no changes are made to what's been done. We are collecting people's thoughts, information, data, what do they know that we don't know? And then we will sit down with the proposed budget and make whatever changes we feel need to be made.
Gotcha.
And then we will present it.
Here it is.
Right, in a a um, public hearing. Because we need to do a public hearing.
Good.
So we will have a public hearing, and then it can go to.
Yes, Martha.
You just tried, you tried to clear. So the town manager will only have to come to know workshops.
Mm-hmm.
So you will be ready to discuss whatever the public needs to discuss on that budget. That's that's really what I'm hearing, which is fine, but I want to make sure Cameron does not come to every single one of these workshops, because if he is, then he is going to be presenting that for.
Right.
No, he shouldn't have to do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so it's, he should be presenting it to you.
Mm-hmm.
You should be looking at the budget and saying, not yay or nay, but yep, this is what's gonna be pushed forward. And then you want to be, you should be looking at that budget and being able to if you agree or don't agree, or like, why is that number that number, that, you need to know that for those workshops, if you're gonna let the public speak, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be the town manager having to explain it over and over again.
Right.
It'll be chaos.
Yep.
Okay. Yes, Judy.
May I ask, did the uh, select board ever abolish the budget committee? We've always had one, and I, and although some people may have thought it wasn't effective, I I believe it was. When did you abolish it?
I I I don't believe it was abolished, I believe we have no one who wanted to be on a budget committee, so we have no members of a budget committee.
Well, I I wonder how many people will come to a a public hearing.
We're curious too.
Yeah, we shall see.
This spin-off what you just said, the budget committee had voted in that meeting to recommend to you to abolish it, but they never provided me with any written documentation, so I never brought it to you.
Good enough. And we don't have to have a forum, but my thought was is if we give this community every opportunity to give their input.
Right.
People seem to have an awful lot to say about what should or should not be spent on the roads.
Yeah.
So let's give everybody every opportunity to express what you know, they feel should be down on the roads, and then we'll do the math and right, go from there, so
Yeah.
Give people every opportunity to express what they think
Yes.
the town should spend money on, or not spend. And hopefully people will take advantage of that.
All right, so we picked the eleventh and eighteenth of March for our select board meetings. The public hearings, we want to do sort of workshop, what were we calling that today?
Workshop, workshops are the ones we don't need to form for, but then technically we need a public hearing.
Yes. So the first workshop, were you gonna do that on the fourth?
Yeah, did you guys have any ideas for when we should do those?
Oh, no, that's daily, because you're not.
Yes, can't, they can't do March four.
All right.
But you could still, we could do March four. If people could attend, then that could be one of the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. How many things we should do, like one during a weekday, one.
Sorry, that was from Peter.
So kind of fourth in the evening, like our regular meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Do we think the weekend one should also be in the evening or more afternoon? I really don't know when people are most freed up.
In the past, I believe we've done those during the day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it looks sort of like nine AM.
Ten day.
Yeah.
Right. So maybe weekday, we could do it the sixth during during the day.
Which month are we talking?
Yeah, sorry, which month, four in March.
March sixth during the day?
March sixth during the day.
Okay.
Is that something that, so the fourth would be like kind of at a regularly scheduled select board meeting time, so like six, six, six works for you, I'd be down for six.
Time for me, yeah.
Okay, fourth at six. The daytime one on the sixth. Did we?
Morning, afternoon?
Yeah.
Like one o'clock.
That, I could do one o'clock.
One o'clock on the sixth.
Bob, do you know, you probably don't know what your schedule would be.
I don't know, maybe I could see what I have.
These are all workshops too, so we don't technically need a quorum.
Heather, is that something you could do?
Yeah, I'm good with whatever.
Cool. All right, so the sixth at one o'clock?
Hey.
The the room isn't already being used as a camera. I'll check the calendar. And then that weekend.
Mm-hmm.
The eighth.
It's not Saturday.
Saturday, yeah. What, like, the nine AM, is that what you're thinking?
Works for me, if that's okay with everybody else.
All right. Yeah. But really, it's it's to collect.
That I won't be here.
No worries.
Okay.
So we'll plan those three workshops.
Yep.
And then we can use the following select board meetings.
Yep, the eleven.
To work through.
Start working through, yeah.
Yeah.
And do we want to hold off on holding the public hearing? Or scheduling the public hearing, I mean. Public hearing should be at has to be a forum.
The twenty-fifth?
We need to have time to have one select board meeting between the public hearing and when that needs to.
Yeah, so we'll have one, oh, I see.
For the public hearing, this first public hearing, if you're doing it just for, well, at this point, you've got all these workshops, so I don't know necessarily.
Yeah, I think of, yeah, what workshops, so kind of three workshops will be making up for a lack of one public hearing. We just do one public hearing and three workshops instead of doing two public hearings on top of the three.
So you're intending to have the public hearing go for, and that's finalized.
Okay. So that probably first, well, you you want it by the sixteen. So April first or eight. Or some other night, but those are the
Right.
Tuesdays.
Tuesdays, yeah.
April first is regularly scheduled meeting, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So if we if we moved the April meetings, we set to the eighth and the fifteenth. And then have the public hearing on the first. So if we have a public hearing on the first, and then on the eighth, we make any changes that we need to make, and we sign off on it.
Yep, and then you would have time, that worked, right?
We don't want to keep April first and just do a public hearing beforehand, seems how town folks will have had the chance at these other three workshops to.
Well, we could, but if we look at last year, it made for a super long night.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we want to
space it out.
Doesn't matter how many shows you hold, some, even if you have it finalized, people are still gonna be here, and they're still gonna question the articles, so.
So we so I'll make a motion that we move the April first select board meeting to April eighth.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Call us in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Heather, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I. And I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing to present the budget
Yep.
to the public on April first at six-thirty.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Heather, I.
You're right.
Sandra, I.
And I will make a motion that we schedule workshops for the budget on uh, March fourth at six PM, on March sixth, sixth at one PM, and on March eighth at nine AM.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Heather, I.
Sandra, I.
All right, thank you. There, that was easy.
For the rest of the.
Yeah, smooth, seamless.
Just worked really hard to publicize that and get the information out there and
Yeah. Hope for a good turnout.
And if there is somebody who cannot make any of those meetings, they can certainly reach out to any select work member to share their thoughts, feelings, or concerns.
I'll promote the annual budget meeting for the RSU as well.
Yes.
Yes, please.
All right. Other business? Select board have any other other business?
Um, I know there's other stuff, but yes, yes, so I'll say it now, because we don't, oh, I guess we do have one more meeting, but I'll make note of it, um. Nomination papers will be available starting March second. There's one RSU ten school board director seat that's up for reelection, and I wrote one, there's two selectmen seats that will be up for reelection as well, so those three positions, if anybody's interested or existing members, your nomination papers can be picked up, which I think that's a Saturday, no? March second is
Sunday.
It's on Sunday, so I guess they'll be available on the fourth. Because they can't be available any sooner than a hundred days prior to the election, so the fourth.
Okay.
And then they'll have to be turned in by April eleventh.
There. Thank you. I would comment. Yes, Martha. What's that?
Um, the planning board last week. Let me look at my. Um, the planning board on the twenty ninth had a meeting. Um, the intent was to have Erica Bupkins with AgCov come present to them and the public. About beginning our com- uh, beginning revisiting the comprehensive plan. Um, unfortunately, Erica had to cancel and we did not have the Zoom capabilities that evening, so she is rescheduling. Um, I don't think they have set a official rescheduling date, but. They are eager to tackle that. I do think the Old Church on the Hill can form a quorum. At this point, so I think that we can technically take that off. I do, the the Old Church on the Hill committee does need to come together. I haven't been able to reach out to Richard Irons. I don't know if it's old. Uh, contact information, but I. Will try and drop by when he's home, because I know where he lives.
So we don't have a meeting scheduled.
We do not have a meeting scheduled, but I would like to ask that of them. Once I can get in touch with all of them, because I can only reach out to two of them and that's not a forum, so. Or is it, since they have three members, is two a forum, if I'm not able to reach out to yours, okay?
Well, depends on if they've updated their bios. Most of the other committees have updated them to. A majority of their point, I haven't read theirs in a while, so.
You know, and my comment would be for that, so that's what I'm saying, it's a solid church on there. I know we're looking for committee members, we do that. The church has rotted.
Yeah.
Church has been rotting for five years, we've known about it five years. Can we have moved on it? We've been waiting for a committee, you can't wait much longer. That it has to start being addressed by the board. If they don't have a committee, the board has to address it.
Some window that needs to be replaced, which is not a standard window, but it's broken.
Not that tonight is the time for the discussion, but that there will be. I believe there will be a warrant article, at least one. Um, for the town to make decisions. Regarding the Old Church on the Hill.
We, I think it still have not had anyone reach out interested in the emergency management director position.
Oh, you weren't here at that meeting, were you? Yeah, me, I'm working on that right now.
Cool. Okay, so since you're still working on.
In between four audits.
I hope nothing ripped out on the first line.
We had one workshop. With them last year. A lot must have gone through from that, and you have a lot of input.
Well, there was some discussion at the select board meeting, and roles, responsibilities and expectations. And. Think we'll. Monitor. The response to that.
As far as integrating two departments in the law.
I think it's safe to say no progress since we made on there. Since we last discussed it. We shouldn't wait for it to become a pressing issue, but right now it isn't, and we have other priorities.
Well, it's that, we just still have to part every once in a while, it's my job. We had this huge list. You picked five, six.
They came off the list because we did them.
No, we were, we had eleven, I think it was eleven, so it was, you know, it went a meter down.
So you're working on, and I watched a couple meetings, they were very short.
Yeah.
We never, then did you like? No progress.
Well, we appreciate it, Martha, definitely worth checking, you know.
Any other public comment, no? Okay, we are having executive sessions tonight. So I'll make a motion pursuant to one MRSA subsection four oh five six F. To discuss property abatement. Uh, PA. Twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty five, one dot twenty two dot twenty five.
I will second.
Thank you. We know all is in favor, bye bye.
So yeah.
Heather, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you. Thanks, Martha, at seven twenty seven.
At seven twenty seven.
Oh, yes, sorry, at seven twenty seven.
I I just say it for the, as I should. That's something to put us in the breakout room with this, well, I guess if somebody tried to join, no, because we're streaming, so.
Oh, there we go.
You got it. You got it, Omar.
Good?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're out of executive session at eight twenty five P M. Uh, we're not going to be taking any action on the uh, Bateman issue and we're going to be seeking some uh, further information before we do so. Um, unless anyone has anything else, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I will second that motion.
All in favor? Bye bye.
Three I.
Three I.
Peter I.
Sandra I.
All right, we'll be adjourned at eight twenty six P M. Thank you, everybody.